Michelle, can you hear from this mic? Can Michelle respond though?
Yeah, she just asked, is anybody else there?
Oh yeah, one moment. My roots are going through-
Oh, I thought that was you talking.
Uh-uh. Michelle said, is anybody there? I'm pretty sure it was Michelle.
How you doing, Austin?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I told her to close the door.
Here, I'll text her.
Sadie?
Yes.
This is Judy.
Oh, who's there?
Who's there?
Who did you say? Sorry.
This is Judy.
Oh Judy, not Judy.
Oh Judy, okay, sorry, we thought Michelle was on. Are you the one that says, is anybody there?
Yes, and it's echoing really bad.
Oh, okay.
Can she hear all of us?
It's going really high too.
Anyway, I told Michelle, um, just put the information on, they will have to call in on their line. Because our office is too small, can't hear anybody, um... So, she could be at the office, or she could call in on the other line.
Hello, this is Jason Blake from the hospital.
Jason Blake. We have Judy.
Wonder if we need just a... Someone... One mic on, it's gonna be that loud. Let me copy it real quick, please.
Yeah, this oughta be interesting, this first round.
Oh, I got one right here, I got one right here.
And somebody else just speak, yeah.
You got one? Yeah, I'm good. I'm very sure it's one.
Yeah, it won't go off when you're trying to... But I'm kind of wondering if we need to just have one mic, 'cause what Judy said, it echoed, it echoing, so... So maybe we only need to have one mic on. Is it echoing on your guys' end, if somebody could respond? Or is that help, we only have one mic on here?
I can't hear you very well, but I can't hear an echo.
Okay. Uh-uh, so Jason, you said you cannot hear very well?
It's pretty quiet.
Okay, we only have one mic on, so it wasn't-
Hello guys.
Is that better?
Much better, thank you.
Okay.
Can you hear, um, Jason, this is Kathy, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
I know, but we... We're trying to avoid feedback.
Well, yeah, well, let's test that, though, turning that mic off.
I'm gonna have to manually unplug it, 'cause it will-
Well, nobody will be there, so...
I got somebody over here, I don't know who it is.
Do you want me to go ahead and unplug it?
Yeah, unplug that one, and we'll try one more.
Hi guys, can you hear me? This is Brian.
Yeah, we can hear you. How is that? Do you have any feedback?
Yeah, it's a little bit of echo and feedback.
We're trying to get it adjusted, so bear with us, please.
Okay. I mean, the feedback I hear is after I talk.
Oh, okay. So you're not hearing feedback. Is anybody hearing feedback after I speak?
Not after you do, Kathy.
Alright, very good.
So then, did you decide if Michelle was on the line?
Um, no, that was...
That was Judy. So, but we haven't heard of Michelle's.
And I heard Ted, Judy, Brian.
Judy, Brian, and Jason Blake.
We got a few in here, I just don't know. You'll just have to tell them to identify.
Do you know Ted is dialing in?
He'll call in there.
What's his number?
He'll call in on the bridge. I told him to call at nine, so he should be calling in a minute. No, what's the last one they did for the meeting, so...
Seven four zero six. Seven four zero six. Sorry, no.
So, they're gonna say that they need to mute.
They need to mute their phones.
Yeah. Whoever's on the bridge. Yeah, so I'll have to tell-
That's where you're off, they say, please.
They're shuffling papers.
Okay, um, everybody who's out there, this is Kathy. You're gonna have to be really careful as far as shuffling papers and moving things around, because it comes through on this side, uh, blasting, so, um, please be aware of that. Thank you.
Can they mute their phones and have you get them?
Yeah.
That's what they need to do, is mute their phones and listen.
Until they're ready to-
Until they're ready to call.
And unmute it when they wanna talk. I think more people on WebEx than I thought.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
I got a... You can look at this.
I used to, yeah, for videos, yes.
Oh, they're popping up names. I can hear my-
Are we ready to go?
Yeah, actually, so let's progress down the place, and we can start.
Can we start right there?
Liz, you get to go?
Yeah, she did.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get the meeting, um, started. So, uh, welcome to the Lander County Commission Meeting, Town Board, um, of Battle Mountain, and Austin Board of County Highway Commissions for April ninth, 2020.
This is- This conference will now be recorded.
Are we good? That's alright. That's okay. So, I'll keep going, uh, for April ninth, 2020, via audio conference, um, by, uh, by go-to meeting. Alright. So, we're gonna head and call the meeting to order.
Kathy, is Ted on?
Ted, are you out there?
Yeah, he's on the line.
Mm-hmm.
We need Ted on.
So, we're gonna, um, hang out for just a minute, everybody, until we can get the district attorney on the line.
And Kathy, are you gonna do a roll call?
Huh?
A roll call?
Are you gonna do a roll call, so it's on the record?
Yeah, we will, we will, um, as soon as... He's dialing in now.
Why don't we go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance?
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and do the pledge of allegiance. You wanna lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, the stand, one nation, and the liberty and justice of the world.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and have a moment of silence. Alright, is Ted on the line?
He'll be on your bridge line, it says number seven four oh six. Sure, that was, they need to mute.
So, bear with us for just a minute, everyone. I was going to. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and proceed, so I'm going to do a roll call. Commissioner Art Clark, are you on? Judy Allen, are you there?
Present.
Brian Sparks, are you there?
I'm here.
Ted Herrera, are you there?
He says he can't get through, he seems busy. I think it's the operator.
So, do you want me to?
I don't try to.
Do you guys want me?
He can call the WebEx, and we can unmute him off the WebEx.
He's trying to get off.
I just got a text from Art, he said his call failed too. To call in on the bridge, so I just have to call in on the eight hundred line? Yeah, and then he can identify himself, we'll see who's talking, and then-
Can I, how do I, can I call Ted from, can I call Ted?
Yes. You can actually call both of them direct, on the bridge. Have we got it? We're gonna call you in, Art, give us just a second.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yeah, I can't hear, like, when Keith's talking, or anybody else is talking, I can hear you and Judy.
Okay, yeah, he's got it. Brian, can you hear us now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, let Brian know, we're just trying to get-
Yeah, we're just trying to get everybody, um, hooked up, so bear with us, everybody, for this trial run. We had it before, we just had it up. Is it up here, maybe?
We had it, we did it.
Here, just tell him, like, tell, tell him to call this number.
Okay. Call him on his phone, and transfer it into the bridge.
Okay.
Try that.
What's that, that number?
Call his number.
Hello?
Okay, hold on a second.
Transfer, star nine two one. Star.
I did.
Star.
Oh.
Your entry is not valid.
Well, let me take, no, no, your right hand.
Ted, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
One more, we're waiting for one more.
I have to dial mine on this one, right?
Yeah.
Did you transfer or dial out?
I'm calling.
I'm sorry, the person you were trying to reach has a voicemail box that has not been set up yet. Please try your call again later.
Six nine five three, right?
Sorry, the person you were trying to reach has a voicemail box that has not been set up yet. Sorry, the person you were-
She's probably trying to call.
Alright, so can we go ahead and-
Yeah. Alright, we're gonna-
Make sure you know that I'm old Patsy.
I will, I will. Um, we're gonna finish with the, um, roll call, uh, so, uh, Ted Herrera, are you here?
I'm here.
Oh, very good. Patsy Waits?
I'm present.
Very good, and I'm Kathy Ancho.
That's right.
So, we're gonna go ahead and move forward. Alright, Lander County Commission may break for lunch, uh, from twelve PM to one fifteen PM. Any agenda item to be taken out of order may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioner reports on meetings, conferences, seminars attended. So, Judy, you wanna start? Judy? Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, um-
That's alright. For conferences?
I-
Meetings attended?
Um, yeah, I had a meeting on, um, March thirteenth with the Central Nevada Regional Water Authority, and honestly, it's been a while, so... I, I will say that the one interesting thing that came out of it was, um, the lawsuit with, um, SUNWA, which is the Southern Nevada Water Authority, uh, Vegas. Uh, the judge has ruled that they cannot continue with, um, or they... He, he denied some of their, um, requests. And, so, there's a possibility that they will not continue with their lawsuit, um, with the, um, the water line that they were proposing to, uh, through eastern northern Nevada, and, um... So that, that's kind of a big thing, um, for the rest of the state. So, it doesn't necessarily impact Lander County, but it, it does impact some of the other counties. So, that's kinda all I have.
Alright, very good, thank you. Patsy?
Yes, thank you. I think as, with most of our commissioners, we've really been busy with a lot of webinars on the computer, and, uh, a lot of committee meetings by phone now, um, but a couple of things I did want to reiterate, I know all of you have been sent the information about the US Fish and Wildlife Service announcement that the Bay State Sage grouse is no longer a candidate for listing, um, under the Endangered Species Act, and that was the one that NACO took on, and actually, we went to court in California over that, back and forth several times, so that is so exciting for us. We still are working with the Greater Sage grouse, however, and Department of Interior does have their, um, their comment period extended for us, we have until May twenty first to get our comments in on that one. It was originally, uh, the first part of April, but, um, uh, NACO does have a draft, if we want to, to, uh, take advantage of the comments on that. Just wanted to advise you all that Earth Day is coming up, you've probably heard about that, it's the fiftieth anniversary on April twenty second, and they're celebrating the environmental education and healthier and more sustainable future, so if you hear some more information on that, that's kind of exciting for their fiftieth anniversary. And, uh, one of the things that came out of the two thousand nineteen state legislature this year, they granted the governor's office, um, actually, his Office of Science, Innovation, and Technology, some additional funds to start a Nevada regional, what they call STEM network. It's to identify and fill gaps, expand, and expand current exceptional programs, and innovate new education programs throughout the state, so they divided it into regions. The organization that actually was given the management control of that network is Desert Research Institute, they were awarded the program. And we have, uh, in the rural area, ten different counties that will be represented, and they did invite me to serve on that Rural Nevada Advisory Committee, um, which I did accept. And, since we are in the middle of our holy week for the Christians, I just want to wish everyone a special happy Easter greetings, and stay safe and healthy. Thank you.
Art, are you on the line?
I'm on the line.
Alright, very good, now-
I'm from my man cave.
Okay, very good, now we are, now we have, um, Commissioner Art Clark on the line, so, we're going over Art right now, uh, meetings and conferences, um, do you have anything to report?
No, I, other than just some observations, that it looks like Art Town's doing, functioning very well.
Very good, alright. Okay, one of the things that if, I could ask you to do when you're not talking, Art, if you could mute on your end, pretty please?
Sure thing.
Thank you. Alright, Brian, are you there?
I'm here, no report.
Okay. Alright, on mine, the only thing that, um, I have attended was a hu- um, hospital board meeting, and it was just a general meeting, that was actually my first one where I conferenced in, um, for that meeting, um, that they had made it available, so, um, members could, um, call in. So, it was just a standard hospital board meeting, um, nothing, um, big to report on that. So, now Keith?
Yes.
But, I have a question, if I could.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, I wanted to ask Brian, I wanna ask Brian if he's noticed a, a big difference in business?
Yeah, the, uh, retail, the retail side of the, uh, business has definitely gotten slower.
Is this stimulus money gonna help you?
Um, I know, I mean, yeah, I think, uh, stimulus money is gonna help a lot of business owners, you know?
Okay. Okay, I, I just thinking forward here a little bit, thank you very much.
Thanks, Art.
Thank you. Alright, Keith?
Yes, um, first off, um, I'd like to acknowledge, um, Nevada Gold Mines, um, they did, uh, set up a five thousand dollar donation to Lander County to help out during this, uh, situation, and it's greatly appreciated that they, uh, they got that, the donation going. Um, we finished the paperwork, uh, earlier this week, and we're, we're still, uh, waiting, but the check should be here shortly, um, after discussion with Monica Sill. Patsy did bring up the sage grouse, um, extension on the sage grouse, um, we did, I did submit a letter, um, on behalf of the county, uh, related to the drafting environmental impact study, but now it's been sent on into May. Um, our airports are, uh, we're out to bid on our two airport projects, which is, uh, pretty exciting. We, uh, should be opening bids in May, and, um, we'll be starting on our, our airport projects, uh, shortly thereafter. Uh, part of this stimulus money, um, it's not set in stone yet, but part of this stimulus money that will go to airports, um, which in turn may, and I wanna emphasize may, possibly, um, allow us to not have to contribute our Lander Counties, uh, match to the grant, that, that percentage, that six percent. So that'll be, that'll be good, we might, uh, be looking at our airport projects this year, one hundred percent funded by the government, by the FAA. The tentative budget, I'm gonna review today and get submitted to the Department of Taxation, which will be, uh, good for us. Now, our final budget, which we have to have a meeting for this commission to review, make changes, and submit. So I, I looked up the NRS, and we have to have it between May eighteenth and May thirty first. Uh, let me see, Bill nineteen of the two thousand fifteen legislative session, the tentative budget puts its tentative until this commission makes it final. Must be held no sooner than the third Monday in May, and no later than the last day in May. So, I'm tentatively looking at May the twenty first, unless that can, come, conflicts with anybody, that'll give, uh, Cindy time to make the changes, and then you, this commission can sign it, and we have to have it submitted by June first to the Department of Taxation, so we're well, we're within our, our, uh, areas of submission. Um, one thing, I, I attend a, a daily conference call with the state, and then, um, of course, I get all the latest, like many of us do, the latest, latest directives from the governor. The latest one that it'll affect Lander County is, um, we have to close our golf course, that was one that he put out last night. Um, so I'm gonna have to get with Bert and see how we close it, we've been letting people go and play on the golf course at no cost, um, but now we're gonna have to completely shut it down. Um, and I will, uh, get it on a future agenda, discuss how the commission wants to adjust for that, for cart rental fees, uh, or for, uh, car storage fees and so forth, but we can talk about that at a future meeting. Um, I have some other things, but they'll come up in Agenda Item Number One, I did receive a message from, um, Russ Klein. He's asking that we, when we do get to Agenda Item One, that allow him to go first, he's got another conference call he's gotta get to regarding statewide, uh, superintendents. Thank you.
Alright, so, public comment, for non-agendized items only, persons are invited to submit, uh, comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any. And discussion of the, those comments, um, at the discretion of the board, all public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, public comment, um, based upon viewpoints may not be restricted. So do we have any public comment at this time?
Muted. Unmuted.
Oh, I, uh, calling in from the CD, can you hear me?
Just one second. Uh, who I can-
I didn't want to be late, but it's still day.
So, what we're gonna have you do, if you're not speaking, if you guys will mute on your end? So, the one person speaking, so, can you dial, notify yourself again?
Okay. I, oh, uh, I don't see it through the window.
Hello.
Thank, thank you.
We have somebody speaking on the line that is not muted, if you're to comment, please, state your name. Can you state your name, who's speaking, please? All of them?
So, Jerry Anis is here.
Oh, Jerry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'll go ahead then, uh, Jerry Anis, calling on behalf of the Conservation District, uh, just wanna real quickly, uh, talk about something that, uh, might seem kinda trivial at this time, but, uh, Mormon cricket, um, we're gonna have a real, uh, in, in, infestation this year, based on what we're seeing. Um, I've had a couple of big conversations with both Keith and Bert about this situation, uh, but, mainly, I wanted to let you know that I've, um, been in contact with Jeff Knight, uh, at the State Department of Ag. And I've told him that baiting, based on what we see, is not gonna take care of the problem, we're definitely gonna be look, needing to look at aerial spraying throughout the county in the worst areas. He has experience with it, last year, they did about five thousand acres, uh, and it cost approximately five dollars per acre. And he, uh, uh, notified me, let me know that, uh, there is actually a cost share program that, uh, the NDA will pay a third of that, the USDA will pay a third, if the associated private landowner will pay the final third, if and only if that private landowner will pay the, uh, uh, final third. So, we've had conversations, uh, amongst members of the Conservation District, we're gonna meet to discuss the possibility of cost sharing on that private, uh, final third with, uh, with private landowners. Uh, so we're moving ahead with this, uh, and I'm thinking that, that you, the county commissioners, might be able to help by, um, getting information to us on locations that they're being seen, and also, uh, uh, me, if, uh, anybody's, uh, at a NACO meeting, if we can get other counties involved, that would be very helpful also. So that's all I've got to say, I'm sure I'll be visiting with Keith and, and Bert, uh, moving forward. Yeah, I'd take any questions, if anybody might.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
I do. Uh, Sadie Sullivan, Lander County Clerk, um, I just wanna put this out here, and if you guys could spread the word, um, we have sent out the letters to notify the voters that they will be doing a paper ballot. Um, you'll be returning it in a prepaid envelope. What we have found is, um, and this is very common- What we have found is, and this is very common, but people move. People move and they. Unmuted. Just one moment.
One second, please.
We need somebody to mute.
So yeah, we need, if you're not speaking, to please mute. Thank you.
So what we have found, people don't think to change their addresses for their voter registration, which is a very common thing. That's the last thing that you do think of if you move. So we've received a lot of letters back. So if you would please spread the word also, if you have moved, if you'll go on to www-registertovote nv.gov and that's where you can change it online. Again, it's www.r-e-g-i-s-t-e-r-t-o-v-o-t-e-n-v.gov and spread the word if you could, please. Thank you.
Kathy, you have a question for Sadie?
Alright, go ahead, is this Brian?
Yes, this is Brian.
Hi Brian.
Sadie, are we going to publish something in the papers stating all that? That if people don't, you know, that they should be looking for this thing in the mail, if they don't get it, they should call your office?
Yes, legally we have to post that and the publications have started and it will, some of the publications run two consecutives, others run for four consecutive weeks. So we do have it out there and then we've posted around town as well.
And, and do we have anything, any front where we can notify people via social media?
Do we have a Lander County where we could throw it out on? I have, I'll post it to the.
Sorry, this is, we can put it on the county website.
Okay, so it will be posted on the county website under elections, under my.
And we can try and share it through social media too.
Okay, yeah, we could try to share it through social media. Do you have any other recommendations, Brian, that I may have missed?
No, no recommendations, just wanting to kinda know what's behind it.
And if anybody does come up with anything, please, please let me know.
Sadie, this is Pat. Just, just a thought, if you contact the two chambers, they do, they have a lot of email on all of their businesses at least, which is still a lot, so maybe they could put it out on their.
We can put it on the marquee.
Yeah, their website too, marquee is good.
When it's running. It was out again. So yes, we'll definitely do what we can for sure and please, please let me know, cause we wanna make sure everybody has that availability.
And we can put it on the website marquee too.
Cause that's pretty big. That one's good. Okay, thank you much.
Thank you.
This is Kathy, I'm gonna ask again, I'm not trying to sound rude, but we need to have you guys mute on your end because when, whatever, when you're moving papers and sliding things, it overbears, so we cannot hear on this end. So please mute if you're not speaking, thank you. I have one thing under public comment. I did want to thank undersheriff Robert Quick very, very much for getting us set up on this system. It's in the sheriff's office, it's greatly appreciated. This is our first voyage here and so it's, we're gonna have a few little burps, but we are getting along well. So thank you very much for doing that, so.
Kathy, can we find out who's not muted and have them mute, cause I cannot hear?
It, it's on the bridge, so there's no way that we can tell who it is. Ted or Art? Are they moving? Ted and Art, are you're, are you muted?
Yeah.
Yes, I am.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and move on. So for the consent, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any organization may request that an item be taken from the consent. Agenda discussed acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda items, agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's office for viewing and copies are available for nominal charge. So for number one, approval of April ninth twenty twenty agenda notice. Number two, approval of November twenty-fifth twenty nineteen special meeting minutes. Number three, approval of December fifth twenty nineteen meeting minutes. Number four, approval of December nineteenth twenty nineteen meeting minutes. Number five, approval of January ninth twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number six, approval of January twenty-third twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number seven, approval of February twenty-seventh twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number eight, approval of March twelfth twenty twenty meeting minutes. Number nine, approval of March eighteenth twenty twenty special budget emergency meeting minutes. Number ten, approval of March nineteenth twenty twenty special health board meeting minutes. Number eleven, approval of the payment of bills. We're going to, within the payment of bills, there'll be specific checks that we're going to go ahead and pull. The first one's going to be for.
No, go ahead and do twelve.
Okay, twelve, I'm sorry, approval of payroll change requests, so then.
This is Pat, may I make a motion that we approve number one, which is the agenda notice? Number two, the approval of November twenty-fifth special meeting minutes? And number nine, approval of March eighteenth special budget emergency meeting minutes? We did not receive the other minutes and we are going to pull the payment of bills and we did not receive any payroll change requests. So my motion is to approve one, two and nine.
Is there a second? A second? Hello?
Brian seconded it.
Okay, you gotta tell us who you are.
I apologize.
Okay, so Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so then.
Art says aye.
Okay, thank you. So then we're gonna go ahead and pull out the, we've pulled out the check for point S and it's checked, there's a few of them. Two oh seven one nine four, excuse me, two oh seven one nine seven, two oh seven one oh six, two oh seven two seven nine, two oh seven three two six.
This is Pat, I'll make a motion that we approve all five of those bills.
Alright, do we have a second?
This is, this is Judy, I'll second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
This is Art, aye.
Thank you.
This is Brian, it was four checks, not five, and I'll abstain from those four checks, they were made payable to my employer.
Alright.
This is Brian.
Thank you. Alright, so then we have one for Judy Allen, two oh seven two three six, so do we have a motion?
This is Brian, I'll make a motion that we approve.
A second?
This is Pat, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
This is Brian, aye.
This is Art, aye.
Aye. Abstain?
This is Judy, I abstain.
Alright, alright, very good. So, the last check's going to be for Patsy Waits, two oh seven two four four, do I have a motion?
This is Brian, I'll make a motion we approve.
Alright, thank you, do I have a second?
I'll second, this is Art.
Alright, thank you. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Brian votes aye.
Art votes aye.
This is Pat and I abstain.
Alright, very good, so.
Kathy, this is Judy.
Yes.
There is, there is also a check for Art.
Okay, so.
Two oh seven two nine nine.
Alright, so do I have a motion for Art Clark's check?
Make a motion we approve for Art, two oh seven two nine nine.
Do we have a second?
Judy second.
All in favor? Aye?
Brian votes aye.
Abstain?
Art, Art abstains for the obvious.
Alright, thank you.
This is Pat, I make a motion that we approve the balance of the payment of bills.
Do I have a second?
This is Judy, I'll second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian votes aye.
Alright, opposed?
Art votes aye.
Any abstain? Very good, we'll be moving on, thank you, everyone. So, okay, one moment, please.
Sadie Sullivan, for the record, just wanted to confirm, we did have an emergency meeting for March sixteenth. So I just wanna add that to the agenda and make sure, did you guys receive that in your email?
Actually, it was not on the agenda, we did not amend the agenda, so we'll put it on next time.
Okay, so I just wanted to confirm you guys did receive that.
This is Pat, I'm sorry, thank you Sadie.
Okay, so you did receive it, everybody, for March sixteenth?
And so yes, it's on the next agenda.
Okay.
So very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to number one for County Manager, update regarding the COVID nineteen from the County Manager, County Health Department, the Sheriff's Department, Battle Mountain Hospital, Lander County School District, Nevada Gold Mines, Battle Mountain and Timoke Tribe and Western Sashone, alright.
Okay, and I would request that we, you put the school superintendent, Russ Klein, on. He's got another meeting to go to, so with your approval, Commissioner, I'd like to request Russ to go first.
Russ, did you hear that?
I did, I was just waiting for you.
Alright, you ready to go, Russ Klein for the school district?
And thank you for inviting me. Just some updates from the, the school district. Our food services are continuing well, they've been expanded to include bus routes and so we've been doing that daily. Each of the schools have had any online learning that hasn't been able to occur. When we've had to do paper packets, we've had a drive-up type procedure at each of the schools and that has gone well on the Mondays. To make you aware, next week is spring break, but we have chosen and will fund from the district to continue to provide the food services during the spring break. As a matter of note, just, not, not that it matters to you, but in a precautionary mode, we have actually set up two different teams that run the food services, manager as well as the assistants. They work on two-week shifts. So if one, if one were to be infected, we would have a backup team to be able to continue the food services. Just a note on the earlier public comment of registering to vote, when it, when it comes time, if you want another place to advertise, we're happy to put things like that onto the district website as well. And one last note, we just, I just this morning was on a call with the state superintendent, the governor was asking the school districts for cuts as we begin to deal with the economic impact that we know is coming. They're looking at a four percent cut in this existing year and running three different scenarios for next year, anywhere from a six or a ten or fourteen percent cut scenarios that they're exploring. So other than that, that's basically where we stand with the, the school district.
This is, this is Art, can you hear me Kathy?
Yes, we can hear you.
Russ, can you hear me?
Yeah.
If, if you have funding issues, please come back to us.
Thank you, uh, uh, thank you.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and go to Keith?
What, what we're doing here in the county is, we've got the doors locked to the public. We have all our numbers listed on the front of the building, our contact numbers. We also have it listed on the webpage, under County Manager, all the contact numbers for the individual offices. What we're doing at the senior center is we're providing daily meals in the north and in the south. In Battle Mountain, we're providing approximately forty meals per day, eighteen of those are deliveries. In the southern part of the county, we're, we're doing seventeen meals in Austin, eleven in Kingston and five in Gilman for a total of thirty-three meals. The Anna Building Department is conducting the delivery of those meals, working with the rec center employees that are doing the preparation of the meals in the north. In the south, Kim and Deb Cardoza are working with deliveries along with Stacy, who's preparing the meals in the south. Other than that, we're, we're continuing with making sure that the bills are being paid. I've cut it down to every two weeks instead of weekly, just to limit people coming in and out of the building. Our employees coming in and the, the contact exposure there. But we are keeping up with our bills, with our payroll and we are in communication with our employees to see how everything's going on a regular basis. If you guys don't have any questions, that's, that's all I have right now.
This is Pat, yes I do, Keith, a couple. I'm wondering, there, there's so much going on with all the stimulus bills and everything and FEMA Disaster Relief Fund and all, and I know that we need to apply for a couple of them, so are you already applying and you're on top of that with what the county has to do?
Yeah, I've been watching those pretty closely. Once the governor's request was approved by President Trump, that opened up the door for us for some FEMA grants, for reimbursements and so forth related to PPE, the personal protective equipment.
And the CARES Act too.
And the CARES Act, yeah.
Yeah, that's state and local government.
That is correct, that's, the CARES Act is actually what we're looking at with the FAA for the, to take our grant match away, or not take it away, but to allow the, the CARES Act to put that money into the match for our FAA grants.
Great, my other, my other concern is then how, how do we get it out locally to our business people, like the paycheck protection program and, and, and I know they have to go to the banks and I don't, the last I heard Wells Fargo wasn't even ready to do that, but I know they have to apply at banks. How do we get that information out to our local people, are we?
So what we can do is, we can put an informational sheet together. I did a press release earlier in the week, I believe it was, it was sent to you guys, just to discuss what's going on with COVID nineteen. We can put a press, I can put a press release together to get that information out there and we can also put it on our county website for business owners.
Great, I think that's important, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Kathy Ancio, I have a couple of questions. So, one of the big complaints with the unemployment, our people are, they're going on there for countless hours trying to prompt through it. They get to the last prompt and it dumps them. So we have all of these people locally who are unable to file for unemployment and then they're saying to send them in, you know, if you can't get in on the computer, to send them in packets, which is, we know how that's going to work out. So with going along with that, on the news last night, the food banks out of Reno, which is where we get our food from, said that they're struggling to get food. So, just a concern, food for thought, well, no pun intended, obviously, but that if, you know, if that's going to happen, it's going to trickle down to here. So, I don't know what we can do, but I think that we need to kind of try to do some brainstorming on that.
So.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
So, so what I did toward the end of week before last, I got together with Sean Baker, whose employees are working at the senior center and we did make a food order, separate of the food bank, separate of the senior center. And we, we brought in sandwich meats, a variety of. a variety of, of, a variety of food, um, that we are actually using, and if we need to go that route again, we can certainly do that. We had to store it in the senior center. Um, we stored it at the golf course walk-in, um, uh, cooler, as well as in the south. So we've, we've pre-staged food throughout the county, um, and we, we, like I say, that was a separate order of, of, uh, the food bank or, and the senior center, to get a stockpile of, of, uh, food to put out, and we can look at that again. I've been monitoring it. We still have food left that, we're in pretty good shape right now for the food that we're serving. Well, I did open it up to any families in need, um, families that are out of work, uh, and, or can't get to the grocery stores, or can't get the things that they need. Our initial order was sixteen thousand dollars. It was quite a bit of food. It was two pallets of food. Um, and we can do that again if, if need be, and we're monitoring it real close. Um, as far as unemployment goes, I, I realize that on my daily, um, public information call and situation report conference call, unemployment is a big thing. Just as an example, um, two weeks ago, our unemployment rate in the state of Nevada was about sixty-two hundred people, and in a week and a half period, it went from sixty-two hundred to ninety-two thousand people. So the, the, uh, unemployment Dieter has put in place, uh, Saturday hours. I believe that takes effect, uh, day after tomorrow. They'll start having people in the businesses, or in the, uh, offices to answer phones and help people work through this, um, uh, applying for unemployment. But that's a pretty big jump for a week and a half. So, uh, they're well aware of it, and they're, they're trying to deal with it as best as they can.
Very good, thank you. So have you, uh, reached out to the food bank here with Andrea from the local, where you had all your kids working? Have you reached out and spoken to her, so she's aware that that's there for, for people?
I, I believe Sean Baker did, but I'm not sure. I will follow up on that to be sure.
Okay, and on the, just a, um, a little bit more on the unemployment, just an FYI. There was, um, everybody's really happy right now with how, what our gas prices are, but there was a, um, teleconference that I was watching, um, and Ted Cruz, the senator out of Texas, said that people better start kind of paying attention to what's going on right now with that, with the fuel prices, because the, um, we're being, our markets are being flooded from foreign oil, and it's driving the prices down, and what will start to happen is you're gonna start seeing our, our, our refineries going out of business. And so that's, as he said, that people just start, need to pay attention to that, because as soon as that happens, when, when, and, when our economy does come up, which is gonna cause a huge, and another, the unemployment rate we have now, you'll have refinery workers out at work as well, which shoots that, you know, that's huge. And so, um, they said that the fuel, that will cause the fuel prices to go up to four to five dollars a gallon when we go back online as far as working, so that's just something to kind of, you, people need to kind of follow, um, because as, as long as the fuel prices continue to go down, then that means our market's being flooded with foreign oil, and that's a, a really, really big deal, just an FYI for people in general to pay attention.
Anna Penola, that includes Bearat Mines, too.
Yes, it does include the Bearat Mines, so that, you know.
Which is local here.
Yes, which is local here. So, uh, just, um, yeah, it's amazing, the outreach, um, that people don't realize. You know, they like the, you know, dollar seventy fuel costs, but, uh, um, it's gonna come back to bite us, I believe. So, um, just on that note. So we're gonna go ahead for the sheriff's department.
Uh, Ron Unger, Lander County Sheriff. Uh, it's business as usual at the sheriff's department. We have, uh, uh, shut down our fingerprinting for the CCWs and non-essentials and stuff like that, but, uh, healthcare individuals, uh, if they need to be fingerprinted, they can call and make arrangements. We take care of that. Other than that, with the sheriff's office, uh, it's business as usual for us.
Ron, this is Pat. Um, so you have plenty of equipment, your PPE and everything you need for all of your deputies?
We have, uh, equipment for our deputies and our staff, yes, we do. We have, uh, I'm not gonna say we have a lot, but we have, uh, enough for right now. We do have more on order. We're getting orders in. Uh, PPE is hard to come by, the latex gloves, the face masks, the N ninety-fives, the gowns. So, we don't have a lot, but we have enough for, say, a month or so, but we do have that stuff. We're trying to get it. We've, we've outreached in the hand sanitizers, another one that we're having difficulty, but, uh, for right now, for a month, we're okay.
On that note, this is Kathy Ancho. Um, um, Brandy Bangoa, our wonderful health nurse, um, started a webpage, uh, Battle Mountain Mask Makers. So you have a, a huge amount of women all through this community who are making masks for all of the business people, for the, um, um, bank ladies, for the, um, post office, for anybody who needs them. So in the case, and they're the reusable ones, obviously, so they're washable. And people have hugely stepped up to, um, do that. They've done a wonderful job. So in the case that anybody does need something like that, that, um, Holly Heath at the hospital can, can be contacted, because she's gathering all of them, and, but Brandy, uh, Bangoa needs a big shout out for that, because the people, you know, she started it and the people just jumped in. Now, I have to say, I attempted to make them, and I'm not a seamstress. I made four. And how sad, but I did attempt, attempt to do it. My heart was there, but just didn't work out so well. But a huge thank you to all of those people in this community who stepped up to make those masks, but those are there for your staff, too, as well, and they are reusable.
Yes, and we have some of those. I, I see the deputies have some, and they're quite unique, uh, which we appreciate. And, and I can say one thing, this community has really stepped up and done what they've been asked to do. We drive around town quite a bit, and everybody is doing what they've been asked to do. Uh, I think this community is just outstanding, the way they've stepped up. So, and a lot of our business, uh, owners have stepped up, to me and to other people around, stating if there's anybody that's hungry, yeah, they've ordered in extra food that they'll give to people. They've got water if they need it. Uh, so, we're very fortunate to be where we're at, so.
Um, this is Kathy.
Anything else?
This is Kathy Ancho again. We absolutely are, from our stores to our businesses, they have all stepped up to, whether it be, um, setting special hours for the elderly to get in there, to the grocery stores, to, you know, i- it's just, it has been remarkable. It's nice to be from a small town, 'cause you wouldn't notice that in the city. So, I appreciate this, the, this community, so.
Absolutely. Anything else? Thank you.
All right, Jason, are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Wanna go ahead?
Sure. Um, I'd like to also echo some of the same comments from, um, the sheriff, that I feel that the county's doing very well and, and abiding by and following the guidelines of CDC and also our governor. Um, uh, we're not seeing, uh, a spread of, of the, the virus like other places are seeing, uh, thankfully. Um, the most recent numbers that I have is that we have tested thirty-eight patients for COVID nineteen. We have zero positives, sixteen negative, and twenty-two that are still pending at the state lab. Um, each of these, uh, tests are sent out to the state lab in Reno, and, uh, depending on what their volumes are, they are able to report back to us, uh, in a timely fashion, um, um, what those results are. I will continue to try to keep the public updated on this. Uh, it seems to be a, a question in the public of whether or not we have it, um, or, or have COVID nineteen in the community. There's a lot of opinions and ideas. Um, Brandy and I, we get to focus and function on what we are told by the state lab, um, and what is reported to us from the Department of Public and Behavioral Health. So, we are giving the public as much information as we have at this time. At the hospital, um, as you guys know, the, the governor has assigned and appointed the National Guard to be the incident command for the state regarding COVID nineteen. Uh, we are involved in daily surveys of patients, uh, of also our, uh, inventory levels. Um, all this information gets fed into the National Guard, to the governor, so that they can make, uh, their decisions that they're, are, are supposed to make. Here at our hospital, we have three entrances that are open. Um, we have the clinic entrance, the front of the hospital entrance, uh, with limited hours, and also the emergency room entrance. At each one of those entries, uh, everybody will be screened for, um, COVID symptoms, um, and directed where they need to go. Um, our long-term care remains safe and sound. Um, we do not have any COVID nineteen, uh, uh, in, in the long-term care, and, uh, they continue to be healthy and strong. Um, the visiting restrictions remain in the hospital, so that, uh, we are not taking guests at this point in the long-term care or in our acute systems, um, just for the protection of the, the patients and our public. Um, we have moved our outdoor screening, um, for patients over to the front portion of the, uh, John Peters Building, uh, for this week. We started on Monday, and the operation has been going very, very well. We've been able to see multiple patients at the same time and perform all the testing, uh, there in the parking lot of the John Peters Building. Uh, I have to thank the, the clinic staff for, for being mobile and agile in that way, by being able to move around and, uh, go to the places that will, um, make it easier to see the patient. Uh, Abby Burkhardt has done a tremendous job. Um, she's been, uh, one right there in the front lines, um, doing all the testing and the screening, uh, so she has done a, a fabulous job along with her staff there at the, the clinic. Um, PPE concerns for the hospital right now, we don't have, we're kind of like the, the sheriff. We don't have big concerns right now, um, but we don't have a big rush on, on the need for them right now. My biggest worry is the replacement thereof, is that, uh, we're unable to replace the gloves, the masks, the gowns as quickly as we need. And so, uh, though we have a good inventory now, um, my concern is if there does become a rush on, on those supplies, um, and the need here locally. Um, our workforce is holding strong, and, uh, we're doing well in, in our workforce. We have already begun to make lists of those people in our community and around our community that, um, are recently retired or may have, um, uh, healthcare certifications that have lapsed, uh, so that we can contact them and get them involved in, in the state licensing program for this emergency. Um, the state has said that it's a quick, uh, turnaround, roughly twenty-four hours, that they can re-license people that have recently lost their license or retired. Um, one of my concerns that we're trying to address are those patients in the community that, um, have other issues and other medical concerns, cardiac issues, diabetic issues, things like that, that we have kind of pushed away, um, to try to keep them safe and keep our staff safe. Um, we need to continue to keep track of them, and so we're looking at a possibility of opening up a telemedicine service, uh, in which we will reach out to those patients that we have concerns for, and we will provide a, a telemedicine service over the phone to make sure that we keep track of those that, um, have these other conditions. Um, the, uh, mask makers, Battle Mountain Mask Makers, the quilting guilds, uh, and other individuals, they have done fabulously. Um, the report I received this morning is that the hospital has received two-hundred-and-forty of these masks from the community. The hospital is laundering each of these, um, at temperatures above a hundred-and-sixty degrees. We have already sent out a hundred-and-thirty-four of them into the public, uh, to employers, um, around the community, and we are currently laundering a hundred-and-six, um, for, uh, uh, for delivery to other places. And so, the community, as stated before, is doing very, very well in, um, in supporting one another. Um, I'm working with Brandy, or we are working with Brandy, Bangoa, to keep track of any patients that we have concerns of, of COVID-like symptoms or, or, or these illnesses, uh, so that we can keep track of those people that are suggested to go into a quarantine. Um, and we're also working with the Lander County Sheriff's Office to keep our first responders safe, so, and, and so that when they go to a scene, they can have the information and, and knowledge that they need to take all precautions, um, to keep them safe. Um, probably the last thing that I have, uh, is that, uh, uh, the governor's office has cut, has come out with a Nevada Hero of the Day program in regards to the COVID nineteen, and, uh, we at the hospital are compiling, um, some of these suggestions of people in our community and around our community that have done such fabulous work, and, uh, we will be submitting some of these names and, and pictures and, and, uh, information to the, the state for the Nevada Hero of the Day program. Uh, and with that, I think I can end and take any questions, if there are any.
I have, uh, this is Kathy. Um, I have a question as far as the telemedicine for, um, mental health, because of the shut-ins and the older people who aren't able to get out. Um, is there, is that going to be somebody that's, you guys might be able to reach out to? Or, you know, the community that are having absolutely no contact with anyone?
For those behavioral health patients that we follow, yes, we could, uh, we could have, uh, some follow-up contact, uh, with them. Um, behavioral health is a difficult area, because they, uh, create a relationship with their provider. I don't know if the, uh, state is continuing their services, uh, for behavioral health, but, uh, we can follow up with those that we have been working with. Uh, Mois can, can keep track of those, um, patients that she has been counseling with, for sure.
All right, very good, thank you. And one more thing, as far as your hero, local hero, something that, that, with that Battle Mountain, um, uh, um, mask makers, is Chris Ripley with the quilt store, because they're the ones who, for the most part, has cut out the patterns and donated. She donated, um, a lot of the material for that, and so, um, her and her staff sat and cut and cut and cut tons of materials. So, um, we were able to make these, so I just wanted it to be noted, and thank, a huge thank you to her and her staff for, um, stepping up and definitely being heroes of the community. So, very good.
I agree.
Is there anybody else that has a statement in regard to that? All right, so we're gonna go on to, uh, Monica with Nevada Gold Mines. Monica, are you there? Okay, we'll move on to the Battle Mountain Band, Timoke Tribe of Western Sashonee. Do we have anybody to speak on their behalf?
Kathy, I have a question. For.
Are you, are you there?
Yeah, one, one second. We have a question. Can you hold on for us for just one second, please?
For Jason at the hospital.
This is actually Shane with Nevada Gold Mines.
Oh, all right. Can you hold one second for me, Shane? Pretty please?
You bet.
All right, go ahead, Liz.
I have a question. It's from Shannon Thies. Um, she doesn't have a microphone. She wants to know if the Battle Mountain General Hospital will be able to handle acute cases of COVID nineteen. If so, how many ventilators are available?
Uh, we are going to be very cautious in taking any COVID nineteen patients in the hospital. Um, reason being is that our long-term care is so close to our acute hospital, we are going to shy away from that, and we will most likely be transferring them into, um, one of the urban areas that can take care of those patients, um, in an isolated area. Um, currently in the county, we do not have long-term, um, ventilate, ventilators. Um, uh, we do have, um, Um, uh, we do have um, uh, temporary ventilators that are used for transport situations with EMF.
All right, very good, thank you. Do we have any more questions?
Kathy?
Yes, is this Art?
This is Art. I have, I have a question for Keith, or for uh, the hospital guy.
All right, Jason, very good, go ahead.
How big is the average hospital that has even one ventilator?
Uh, that's a real good question. Um, in order to run a ventilator, you have to have specific staff for that ventilator twenty-four seven. Uh, and so it depends on the staffing level and mobility. Um, I think that probably our closest is uh, Elko and uh, Winamucca, but the major source of ventilation is uh, going to be Renner.
Okay, that that answers my question, thank you.
Uh, this is Monica.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name again?
Monica Steele, the line.
Monica.
Oh, Monica, all right, very good. Are we ready to go for Nevada Gold Mines?
Sure.
All right, go ahead, you're on.
Okay, so this week I wanted to share that we have temperature screening for all employees, vendors, contractors, before they can act to fight at both Phoenix and Detroit Bridge, and uh, the rest of the state has implemented the same for all employees, vendors and contractors. I'm not sure why the, can I hear me?
Monica, you're breaking up, we're getting about every third word.
Okay, give me a second.
All right, very good, thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Dave, and I'll call back in on a different phone.
Okay. Shane?
Yeah, I may be able to elaborate.
Okay, you wanna go ahead for us, please?
So, my name's Shane Moss with Nevada Gold Mines, uh, the manager of corporate division here. Focus on the COVID response, we liaison for Elko County. What Monica was referencing is we've implemented temperature screening at all of our facilities and offices, uh, most of this done prior to loading on vehicles or in the buses. Also, and I know Monica wanted to elaborate a little bit more, our focus has been on making certain that the food is available for communities, at-risk members, seniors, things like that. It sounds like you've got good programs in place for that. Also, wanna make sure the school needs are being met. So, on top of that temperature screening, of course, we've implemented other policies, but uh, Monica, I know has the emails for the county manager and other people. If if you have needs that we're not aware of, please uh, please make sure Monica knows, and she'll get back with us and let us know if we can help in any other regards as well.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Monica, are you there?
I am, can you hear me now?
We can, do you want, do you wanna elaborate on anything?
Yes, I would also like to share that uh, Humboldt County, they're having a virtual town hall meeting tonight at seven PM, and I will forward the contact uh, call-in information to all of you. Uh, it's just to share across the communities again, uh, what we can all do to come together to fight this and try to mitigate all that we can. And then I also wanted to share with you, uh, we participate on their uh, COVID test committee as well, and they actually have a group that, it's a call group, that reaches out to the local businesses in the area to help the business owners and managers know what are the right things to do to protect their staff and community. So I'm not sure if we have anything like that right now in Lander County, but if that's something that you're interested in putting together, I would be more than happy to help out with that. It's just an education on mitigations and how to protect your employees and that kind of thing. So, please, if there's any interest in that, reach out, and I am happy to help.
All right, very good, thank you.
Monica, this is Pat Waits, um, to you and Shane, thank you so much for the donation um, from the Nevada Gold Mines, um, the special one that you gave to the county for the COVID nineteen. We sincerely appreciate you always being such a a partner in everything we do. So thank you for being there in all you do.
You're very welcome, and as Shane uh, stated, if there's other needs right now that Nevada Gold Mines can support, please reach out.
All right, very good, do we have any more questions?
I don't know if there's any more, but um, would you go back and um, ask Randy to speak up?
Yeah.
She's got some stuff.
All right, Brandy, are you there?
I'm here.
All right, very good, Brandy with our community health nurse, go ahead.
So, community health remains close to the public. Uh, we go in twice a day, we're checking our emails and our voicemails, so if anybody needs to reach us, you guys leave a message, we'll call you back. Um, I'm working with the local officials, the state officials, to gather information and keep everybody in the community updated. Um, as it is right now, Lander County remains with just our one positive, who was a ghost in the community that gave a phone number and address of Lander County. We were never able to contact that person, we assume they don't live here. Um, I haven't been contacted by the state for any other positives in our area, so that's what we know as of right now. When we do get more information, we'll put it out on our community health webpage. The county manager puts it on his website, and we can try and post it in the community where we put the commissioner board meetings and stuff like that, but if people are staying home, then they probably won't see them there. Um, continuing to just encourage our social distancing and isolation. I was in and out of town yesterday, grocery stores still have a lot of people there. I know people need to get their groceries and stuff like that. But if we can just encourage everybody that can stay home to stay home, then this will help a ton. Um, encourage them not to attend funerals, baby showers, birthday parties, things like that. Those seem to be the high-risk activities that people are participating in that are increasing Humboldt County's increase in tests, same with Elko. So if we can just encourage everybody to stay home with their little group, that would be awesome. Um, shout-out again to those, the Battle Mountain Mask Makers, they're doing a great job, they're working hard. Holly Hees at the hospital is working extremely hard as well, she's laundering these, she's getting them off the public with proper instructions, so that's super important. Other than that, I don't have anything else, do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, I have a question, how's how's Dr. Peters doing?
He's fine, he's at home, him and I, we text back and forth every day. I haven't been going over there because he is elderly and I don't wanna get him sick. So, he's doing fine, he's hanging out, he said he's bored to death, so if anybody wants to call and chit-chat with him, then he'd probably love that.
Okay.
Very good, all right. We're gonna go ahead and um, is there anybody from the Battle Mountain Band, the Team Oak Tribe with Western Shoshone? All right, if there not being anyone on there, we're gonna go ahead and move on to number two, assessor for possible action to approve/disapprove the termination agreement between um, DevNet Incorporated and Lander County.
So, this was put on by uh, assessor, and I don't know, um, Laura, are you on the line? I guess not. So she's requesting that the commission approve the termination of the DevNet contract. Um, she's worked with them, and to get this contract um, terminated, there's a um, a clause in there allowing us to terminate, and it won't cost the county any money.
Ted, Ted is on the line, and he's been working with Laura.
There you go, Ted, maybe Ted can give some, give some more with, from Laura's side.
Yes, um, Kim Alonso, information officer, what this is, and you could probably open up two and three simultaneously, it would be more efficient, because this is an agreement that Laura worked with DevNet, uh, because DevNet's not working, and and we we brought that to your attention a a couple of times, and we were even considering lawsuits, and and this termination agreement would be in lieu of a lawsuit, and Laura's happy with it. It's my understanding that Eureka County and a couple other counties are also doing the same thing. In fact, Eureka may be used-
They, uh, Liz asked me to have you hang on for one quick second, please?
Okay.
Ted, you want her to open up three before you go on?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and um, open up two, all right, two and three together.
You gotta read them in.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, for number three, it says for possible action to approve/disapprove the ADS support agreement between DevNet Incorporated and Lander County. Okay, Ted, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I believe Eureka County is is doing the same same, uh, to my understanding, they have the same agreement that we have, and a couple other counties too. And basically, Laura is could use the ADS agreement, the ADS system, to fill the gap that DevNet was supposed to fill, and it's unable to fill because their tech doesn't work, so ADS, it it could take two years till we get to our new program, but, well, a year and a half now, and he believes that ADS will accomplish this. So, these contracts, the first one is to approve the termination agreement, and that terminates the Lander County-DevNet agreement, and we get no money back. But what we do get is the contract with ADS support agreement between DevNet and Lander County, and that's because DevNet owns ADS, it's for your information. So, we had to work with uh, DevNet even to get the ADS, and ADS is going out of business, so we, it's only for one year, but Laura believes by the time this gets signed, sealed and delivered, that one year could be sufficient. So I have looked over both of these contracts, both of these agreements, and if you blame it all, you notice that they both have a confidentiality clause. I brought that up to Laura's attention, and to the uh, owner, Steve Conno, the owner or the CEO of DevNet, and he's written, both Laura and I, uh, emails that says that he understands that both these agreements will be presented in public forums for the county commissioner. So if you're worried about the language and the confidentiality clauses, uh, this is basically a waiver of that for our purposes today. Are there any questions?
Ted, yes, this is Pat, um, just a quick one, is this effective upon our action today? So, the effective date that this all happens is today?
If, if the contract's in-
I think I saw something in there.
If they've already been signed by the other party, yes, it would go into effect as soon as they're uh, signed by the commissioner.
Okay, I will make a motion that we approve the termination agreement between DevNet Incorporated and Lander County, and authorize the chair to sign.
Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Art.
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Art says aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are good to go on that.
Okay, with that, then I will make a motion that we approve the ADS support agreement between DevNet Incorporated and Lander County, and authorize this chair to sign.
All right, can I get a second, please?
Art will second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Art is aye.
Judy's aye.
Brian is?
Brian is aye.
All right, very good, very good.
Yesterday, I received a call from Randy Clark, Clark Park, asking about um, if the county would would be willing to waive um, the bed tax uh, within the county. I explained to Mr. Clark that that is a um, uh, convention and tourism function, and that that would uh, have to come from convention and tourism in order for that to be done. He asked if we could look at it at a future agenda item, to ask the commissioners if they would be in favor of supporting that and then taking it to the convention and tourism. Um, so I I told him I would bring it up at the meeting today and um, put it on a future uh, agenda to to discuss it in a meeting, and then possibly um, take it to convention and tourism, I could take it to one of their meetings, if that's the direction the commission wanted to go.
Well, I'd like to, this is Art, I'd I'd like to uh, discuss and possibly act on some kind of a relief program for Lander County inclusive. I don't wanna see, I don't wanna lose businesses in this county, and I don't want citizens to go losing their homes, and if if we can uh, somehow assist, I think we should at least talk about it.
This is Pat, so my question is then, are we putting it on the agenda to recommend we waive all of the Roman vortex in the whole county, or just for him?
Well, it it came from him as a business owner, but it would be for the entire, or my recommendation.
Because part of that, that we collect is for the state, so if that's what you want to do, is put it on the agenda item, or maybe our our legal can tell us whether it's something that we can even talk about.
That was the question I was gonna ask you, Ted, this is Liz, can that even be done?
Well, the county doesn't have any authority to do it, only make recommendations to the foreign rec board, uh, and those recommendations, they could only waive the amount they get, they certainly, they couldn't waive what, they couldn't waive the taxes that the state gets.
That's my thought.
Um, this is Judy. So my understanding, and Randy has talked to me about it a little bit, is it has to do with, um, I believe his his long-term rental for the RV parts, that other counties within the state, et cetera, don't charge um, for long-term, you know, if you're there a month or more, you don't have to pay the bed tax on your hot spot. So, your your overnighters, um, things like that, they still would have to pay the bed tax. But if you rent a spot by the month and go in, that's one of his issues is is charging for that. It's it's what I understand it to be, now, I could be wrong, but like I said, that's my understanding of what his issue is.
So, Judy, this is Ted, so he's contemplating uh, waiving a ordinance?
Well, I'm not sure if it's any ordinance.
Uh, can we have, somebody's, can we have, hold on for a second? We have somebody rustling around papers, and we cannot hear anybody who's speaking.
I think it's a phone cord.
So, um, if whoever's doing that, if you'll please mute, we greatly appreciate it, thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Ted.
Well, I I don't know off the top of my head, but I I believe that it may be by ordinance on on definitions of of uh, how long you stay there and will be taxed and stuff, so so if 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 that's what he's looking at, and and I have yet, I haven't seen his uh, his uh, request, so I wouldn't be able to give a legal opinion on it yet, but but we might have to contemplate looking at the ordinances and and doing it that way. That's all I'm suggesting, Judy, that it might have to do with the ordinance.
And that's fine, it it, right now, um, the question of putting it on the agenda to discuss, but just a little bit of clarification is it's not totally waiving um, bed tax for his entire business. It's, it's something that would come up during the meeting, but um, like I said, I I do believe it's just for his long-term um, renters. it's just for his long-term renters.
Is this Judy speaking?
Yes, it is, Kathy, sorry.
All right, no, thank you.
Judy, this is Pat, thank you. I appreciate the clarification, because I think that's probably where he is coming from. So, if this is possible to do, and I do know some counties do actually waive it after 30 days, so we apparently do have some kind of control to at least do some recommendations. So, that would be very important on how the agenda is worded. So, appreciate your clarification. We'll let Keith look into that and put it on the agenda, then. While I'm speaking, I do have something to ask on the agenda. The minutes that Sadie brought up that we were given are for the 16th of March emergency meeting, so that will have to be put on our consent agenda for next time, and all of us, I think, have received those minutes already. And I would like to see us put on the census again. I know that that has been extended, but if you go on one of the websites that actually, the census websites, it tells what the percentages of the counties that are actually doing their census already by the computer. And Lander County is very low in that. So, I would like us to at least, at least address it, so we can address it to our citizens again on the importance, as they say, 10 questions, 10 minutes, 10 years of fender funding for the county and Nevada. So, I think we should at least put it on to talk about it and bring it, highlight it on how important it is. Thank you.
Do we have anything more under? All right, so do we have any public comment?
Well, I want to thank everybody for bearing with us through this. This was our first attempt at this. We, our next meeting will be like this, and I'll talk with Robert a little bit and see if we should look into incorporating video into it as well as video presentations. We talked about it a little bit, so we'll see how it goes. But we do have some things that need to be addressed. But I appreciate everybody's time and effort, and Robert, I appreciate you and Liz working to get this thing put in place, so we can try to continue to conduct county business. Thank you.
This is Sadie Solvin, Lander County Clerk. I wanted to also thank the staff from the rec center that's been able to, that's still working, that's been able to come clean, has been able to go over to the senior center and help out in all those areas, so they've been shuffled around a bit. So, I wanted to put a thank you out there to them. And again, like they stated, for the masks, we have Angie Shirley that's done masks and all the quilt people and that type of thing. So, I just want to put a huge thank you out there for us that are still working and plugging away.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Motion to adjourn, this is Pat.
Do I have a second?
This is Judy, I'll pass it.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right.
Brian, aye.
All right, opposed? Very good. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everybody, for your patience.
Goodbye.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Yay, we did it. Thank you, guys. Okay, so will that automatically go to you, Robert?
Yeah, I'll get a link for it and I'll download it.
Okay. 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 Well, I just want to make sure that I don't need...